Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for December the 14th, 2016. As is our regular practice, we will begin first with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence is dedicated to the American hero and the Ohio native that we lost this week with astronaut and Senator John Glenn. So in his own words, "Godspeed, John Glenn." If we could take a moment of silence now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Motion for consideration, Mr. Looby?
Motion 2016 to 14, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting held on November 30th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016 to 14 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 15, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016 to 15 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 16, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending November 22nd, 2016.
I move motion 2016 to 16 to approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending November 22nd, 2016.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 17, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending December 6th, 2016.
I move motion 2016 to 17 to approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending December 6th, 2016.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 18, approve the seasonal terminations in the Parks and Recreation Department effective November 8th, 2016, of Elizabeth Roderheimer, Jared Smith, and Dan Wintestader, all part-time seasonal service worker positions.
I move motion 2016 to 18 to approve the seasonal terminations of Elizabeth Roderheimer, Jared Smith, and Dan Wintestader.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 19, approve the seasonal termination in the Parks and Recreation Department effective December 8th, 2016, of James Penny, part-time seasonal service worker position.
I move motion 2016 to 19 to approve the seasonal termination of James Penny.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 20, approve the termination of Jacob R. Urban, part-time firefighter, EMT, in the Fire Department for failure to provide information regarding successful completion of the National Registry Exam for EMT Basic effective December 14th, 2016.
I move motion 2016 to 20 to approve the termination of Jacob R. Urban.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 21, accept the voluntary resignation of Matthew J. Gothier, part-time firefighter, paramedic, in the Fire Department, effective December 27th, 2016.
I move motion 2016 to 21 to accept the voluntary resignation of Matthew J. Gothier.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 22, approve the Parks and Recreation Department submission of a grant application to the Taking Root Tree Fund Grant offered by the Taking Root for $2,000 for up to 12 trees to be planted around Clearview Lake with a potential cash match up to $500 funded by the Park Fund.
I move motion 2016 to 22 to approve the Parks and Recreation Department submission of grant application to the Taking Root Tree Fund Grant.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 23, approve the Department of Community Development submission of a grant application on behalf of the Delhi Township Community Improvement Corporation to the Spot Demolition Grant Program offered by Hamilton County Planning and Development for up to $25,000 to assist in demolition of a structure located at 4770 Delhi Pike.
I move motion 2016 to 23 to approve the Department of Community Development submission of a grant application on behalf of Delhi Township Community Improvement Corporation to the Spot Demolition Grant Program.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016 to 24, authorize the township administrator to execute rental agreements with the Hamilton County Board of Elections for their use of the Park Lodge, Community Senior Center, and Township Administration Building as polling places for 2017.
I move motion 2016 to 24 to authorize the township administrator to execute rental agreements with the Hamilton County Board of Elections.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Presentations this evening, Mr. Long, or there's still none?
Right.
All right. Trustees' correspondence, trustee Oswal?
I just wanted to thank Delhi Business Association for a great event with the Christmas Parade. We had an excellent turnout, over 65 entrants, and we finally had good weather this year. So, thank you for everyone who attended, and thank you, DBA.
Trustee Sturts?
Thank you for the bicentennial for the gala. It was well-attended and very much fun. Thank you.
Okay, I think a big thank you coming up to the end of the year now for all involved in the bicentennial. I think we heard a lot about it this morning at the DBA meeting, and I just want to thank all those groups, the Delhi Historical Society for the gala, the DBA for the parade, as well as for Dog Days, and all the other smaller events that took place through the year. It's been a tremendous birthday, so thank everyone. Report from fiscal officer.
No report.
Okay, public hearing. We do have cause for public hearing this evening. May I have the motion, please, Mr. Looby?
Motion 2016 to 25, approve the opening of the public hearing for ZC 2016-1, the Delhi Pike Business Corridor Map and Text Amendment.
I move motion 2016 to 25 to approve the opening of the public hearing for ZC 2016-1.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Public hearing open. Mr. DeLong?
Sure. This is the zoning and map amendment for the business corridor on Delhi Pike. We did contract with McBride-Dale Clarion. They are here tonight, Greg Dale and Liz Fields, and they're going to be giving a presentation on this amendment that we completed. The zoning commission took about nine months to get through this process, a lot of hard work, a lot of lively discussions, but we came to, I think, a good product in the end that will actually complete the vision of what we're looking for in the future for Delhi Pike as part of the strategic redevelopment plan. So, I can turn it over to Greg and Liz and let them do their presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Good evening. My name's Greg Dale. I'm a principal with McBride-Dale Clarion, and it has been our pleasure to work with the township again on this project. We've had a great experience working with the staff, your legal counsel, and your zoning commission in particular, as Greg just kind of suggested, was very hands-on with this, put in a lot of different meetings, a lot of detailed discussion of this. So, what I'd like to do, Greg, if you could just go to the next... Our goal in this process was very simple. Our job was to help the township write the zoning regulations, which ended up being an amendment to your zoning resolution, that went as far as we could from a zoning perspective in helping to implement this plan. And by this plan, if you go to the next slide, you all are familiar, recall your redevelopment plan. I won't reiterate that. Your vision here is very well-stated. I will say that we were particularly excited to work on this project because what you are doing here, what you're setting out to do here in a township, is very forward-thinking. We are working, Liz and I are working with communities all over the state and really all over the Midwest and Southeast where mature suburban communities are going back and essentially rethinking their commercial core, their commercial core that developed over the 50s, 60s, and 70s, and is now aging. You're at the front end of that trend. What you're doing is very exciting, and not only did the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission unanimously endorse this, but the county planning director, the professional planner, has been talking about this project all over the county as an example of what maturing suburban communities should be doing to prepare for the next generation. And we could go on and on about the ideas that are behind this plan, but you've already been through that. We don't have to re-discuss that. So, what I'd like to do is to turn this over to Elizabeth Fields. Liz is going to walk you through very briefly just kind of what we've been up to, and in particular focus on what's in these regulations that is different than what you have in your current overlay zone, and then we're available to answer any questions. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Liz.
Thanks, Greg. Again, I'm Liz Field with McBride-Dale Clarion, and I've really enjoyed working through this process again with the township and the zoning commission. This is just the highlights of the review and approval process that we've been through thus far. Again, I think Greg stated this, that it's been about a six-to-nine-month process. We had six meetings with the zoning commission to get through the different drafts and different options for how to go forward with this, with these proposed changes, and what we have in front of you, I think, again, is the kind of culmination of that. When we started this discussion, it was kind of tossed around some different ideas of how to go about this project, whether it was just amendment to the current DPCO overlay zone, or if we wanted to go in a slightly different direction. And where we landed was that a new zoning district, this new proposed Delhi Pike Business Corridor zoning district, would have more control for the township and be able to take the regulations that the DPCO set up, but that maybe didn't go quite far enough, that now, you know, with the planned vision, this walkable, turning Delhi Pike into a walkable corridor, we needed some kind of more stricter regulations in the code, so when development comes in, the township has the teeth to kind of require the kind of development that the plan envisioned. So, that's why we landed with the proposed zoning district. And it was written to really, again, promote the overall vision of the plan and create a consistency in design and character through the whole corridor. This is the map of the proposed zoning district, and I know you've seen this before. And then on the next slide, the dark black outline is that new district but overlaid onto your existing zoning map. So, I just wanted to show you this. So, you have it in your reference. The hatch mark over the majority of the E is the current DPCO. So, the new district majorly is made up of the DPCO, but there are a few key properties that we added that were slated as a mixed-use development in the plan, and even though they were left out of the DPCO, we thought that they would be appropriate in this new district moving forward to really, again, implement the vision of that plan. These are the highlights of the major changes in the district. The rest of your zoning code deals with prohibited uses. The zoning districts kind of build on each other and list the uses that you can't do. This district lists the uses that you can do, which is a slight change of pace, but it allows better control, because it's really hard to come up with the list of prohibited uses, because you just can never think of everything. There's always some sort of random off-the-wall thing that doesn't quite fit into a category, and, you know, that sneaks through, and then you're stuck with something that you didn't want. So, we thought this was a better way for the township to really get the uses in this corridor that was envisioned in the plan. It does permit residential and mixed-use developments, townhomes and multifamily. It does not allow for single-family, but it does have that residential component that was envisioned. And then we improved the site design standards to really kind of up the requirements of the development community. The highlights of that, for site design standards, we have language in here that talks about reduced building setbacks and building, that buildings should be built to the back of the sidewalk or the back of the street where applicable. That parking should be at the rear or the side of buildings and not in front, and that major focus along Delhi Pike. Limiting retail uses to 40,000 square feet. We did an analysis of kind of where that threshold would be, and the 40,000 allows for the smaller retail like a DSW or TJ Maxx, but it doesn't allow for the Walmarts and the really large, big-box stores that, you know, were not included in the vision for this area. So, it does allow for smaller grocery stores like a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods, but not the major grocery stores. And then also, there's a lot of language about encouraging outdoor seating and gathering spaces. So, no, I'm just going to... The image on the left is an image from the zoning code, and then on the right is an image from the plan. For signage, we, the previous DPCO allowed for both pole and ground signs. With the new district, we're proposing no more pole signs, that all freestanding signs must be monument-mounted with a base of stone or brick, as shown kind of on the left-side one. It also allows for shopping center signs, like the far-right picture on the screen. So, if there is a large shopping center, they can have that kind of larger monument sign that allows for the advertisement of multiple uses within that shopping center. And then we also limited the amount of window signage that businesses can have in this district, so, you know, you can't just limit the permanent sign into them and have them clutter up their whole building with window signage. Landscape standards, we added in landscaping, parking lot landscaping requirements for both within the parking lot and then around the parking lot. Also increased the buffer standards between residential and non-residential uses, and then also from like between the parking lot and the street, so that there's not, there's a little bit of a landscape buffer to help minimize the harshness of parking lots against the street where they would exist. And again, the example on the right is an image from the proposed code. And that is the quick summary of the major changes in the new district. So, again, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Liz, there's going to be a few questions.
Sure.
And I think one of them, we presented the Stan Tech, you know, Plan the Pike type thing, and we talked about timing and how long, and when would we see change, and we get a lot of questions throughout the community about, well, when is this going to happen? And I would just like for you to share with us what you think our timing has been and will be going forward, because when I reviewed the zoning, I was shocked to find out that it has not been reviewed in 19 years. So, you know, we're picking up something and rewriting that was written almost 20 years ago for this community, and we're putting out something now that we see going forward. But what about the timing, and what about, how quickly can we move? How do you feel we've done so far?
That's a hard question to answer, because it really depends on the development community. You know, you put out the vision to the development community with the plan, you know, that states what, you know, Delhi wants to see on this quarter. The zoning now will reinforce that, but a developer still has to come and propose something and want to do something within this corridor for you all to really see change. So, that's a really hard...
Greg, do you have any comment to that?
I think one thing you probably will see immediately will be the window signage, because a lot of that is temporary, and it needs to rotate, so it's not grandfathered in.
Okay, because that's my next question.
Right.
Can you explain to everyone grandfathered, because we're not going to go down Delhi Pike and take down every pole sign?
No, no, no. What you see out there now will remain. The thing is, that will happen is when they remove that structure at some point in time, it could be 20 years from now, it would have to meet the current regulations at that time. When we have the square footages of buildings, they're going to be grandfathered in. For instance, Kroger, I mean, they're well over 40,000 square feet. So, on our end from staff, we're going to go, we're going to have to go out and monitor and actually document the non-conformities that this rewrite will cause, so we can keep a log of it as things evolve over time, so we can get them caught up to speed. But it kind of like what Liz says, it's really just when development comes in, you know, that's when you're really going to start seeing the changes, so, and you can, it's hard to predict when that can be, so...
Yeah. I mean, but you can see in corridors, especially like Col Rain, I think is a good example, when they changed their zoning to require the ground signs and added more standards, and you can really see a big change in that corridor now. Again, there's still some things that are not that desirable, but it...
Getting better.
It does take time. Things get better over time. And I think if you have a large, like the plan talked about the catalytic development sites, if one of those goes, if a large developer comes in and, you know, completely takes up one of those sites and redoes it, I think that's going to spur a lot. You got to have something that really gets the development community excited about these changes. It's going to be hard if it's just a Wendy's that comes in and then has to meet these standards.
And by writing this and approving it, hopefully tonight, we will encourage that development to follow the rules.
Yes.
Is that... Okay. Trustee Sturts, you have a question?
Yes. When does this go into effect?
Once it's...
Yeah, well, it'll be 30 days from tonight.
30 from tonight. Okay. And then my second one about the window signs. And like you said, that's temporary. Is that 20% of, collectively of all the windows in a restaurant, let's say? I'm looking at some of those. Or is it 20% of a pane of window? I mean, I'm thinking of one in particular.
Total glass or just...
Yeah, it's a total glass, or can they have every one of their windows 20%?
I would interpret it as 20% of your total is the intent of what we did, and you would be surprised at how much that will cover your windows. It's still a lot of sign.
It's still a lot, right.
In a previous place I worked, we did a study. One of my coworkers and I actually went out and hung sheets of paper on windows just to show, and even at 10%, you're like, wow, that's covering a lot of window. So, when you do it as the gross amount, it's still a lot of signage, but, you know, the key thing here is attractiveness and also visibility, you know, inside the building should they ever need to view it if there's an event going on from the outside and need to look in, so...
And we also did cap it at 100 square feet. So, if it is a larger business that has a lot of windows and 100 square feet is less than what they would be allowed with their 20%, they are capped at that 100 square feet.
Thank you.
Trustee Oswal, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Fiscal Officer Looby, any questions?
No questions.
Well, I'd like to take just this moment to recognize the fact that you recognized people that we really value, and that's called our zoning commission members, who got together and put all this down and researched it and went through a lot of extra time. So, a very special thank you, and a lot of gratitude goes to Charlie Fair, Dan Burke, Dale Weisker, Kevin Rhodes, Neil O'Connor, and our former member, Jane Patton. They put a lot of hours into this, and I know they're very proud of it, and thank you so much for the work that you've guided them through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any public comments tonight regarding the zoning? All right. Then, Mr. Looby, may I have the motion to close the public hearing?
Motion 2016 to 26, approve the closing of the public hearing for the ZC 2016-1, Delhi Pike Business Corridor Map and Text Amendment.
I move motion 2016 to 26 to approve the closing of the public hearing for ZC 2016-1.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. That concludes the public hearing. I have no reports from departments. Is that still correct, Mr. Long? All right. Reading of the resolutions then, Mr. Looby?
Resolution 2016 to 82, resolution approving purchase order obligations, and current on behalf of the township by the township administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswal?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016 to 83, resolution authorizing transfers from one appropriation item to another pursuant to revised code 5705.40, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Explanation, Mr. DeLong?
Sure. One of the items is actually a transfer of funds, so we can continue to pay our wonderful law director. So, that is one of the items. Another one is actually salaries. When we actually enrolled one of the trustee members, we started their benefits a month early, so we're now a tad short. So, it is to kind of cover that expense. The other items are just basically a shortcoming and just appropriations that were expected, so...
Okay.
And then actually, we had one for a tax allocation, which we got more homestead tax than we anticipated, so we have to identify it in our buck system that we actually are covering that expense, so...
More is good?
More is good.
Okay. All right.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswal?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016 to 84, resolution entering into collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Township Professional Firefighters, Local 3389 IAAF, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Chief Doug Campbell?
No, this is basically a three-year contract with the Full Time Association. We're looking at a continuation of the bulk of the contract, really changes in salary and vacation buyout.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswal?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016 to 85, resolution authorizing a contract with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for professional and technical zoning services pursuant to revised code 519.16, authorizing and directing the administrator to execute the contract and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. DeLong?
Yes, this is an annual renewal we do every year in case we need additional services from Hamilton County, so there's no cost at this point, but if we do need to do it. Let me remind you, though, too, we are looking at being a member down there, so that should help alleviate any additional costs that may come along later on, so, because some of the services overlap.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswal?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016 to 86, resolution entering into an agreement for professional services with McBride-Dale Associates, Inc., DBA McBride-Dale Clarion, to assist the zoning commission with its review and implementation of Phase Two of the Delhi Township Strategic Redevelopment Plan Recommendations for a possible text and map amendment to the zoning resolution, authorizing the community development director to execute the agreement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. DeLong?
This would be our Phase Two of the Delhi Pike Strategic Redevelopment Plan, zoning and map amendment. Basically, we're looking at doing the area east of what you just approved tonight, so this would contain the residential component of the plan. So, as you know, we had a great relationship with McBride-Dale Clarion before, and we'd like to continue it as we move into 2017.
All right.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswal?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016 to 87, resolution entering into contract with and accepting a donation of services from View Theory LLC for graphic design services benefiting the Park Department, authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to execute the contract, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Torbeck?
Thank you trustees, View Theory is going to basically donate their time and services to create some graphic work for us, we have a fitness trail out at Story Woods that we had a scout recently complete, but there's no available signs to us, so View Theory stepped up and they'll be creating it all and then handing it over for us to create those signs.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Stirts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 to 88, resolution adopting the recommendations of the Delhi Township Zoning Commission and its Resolution Number 2016-9 in case ZC 2016-1 concerning map and text amendments regarding the Delhi Pike Business Corridor District.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, again, Mr. Long?
I have nothing to add unless you have any additional questions.
Questions?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Stirts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 to 89, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 342 Anderson Ferry Road to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Stirts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 to 90, resolution clearing nuisance for accumulated debris at 4333 Mayhew Avenue, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Long?
Yeah, as you can see on the slide on the screen up there, there was accumulated debris here at 433 Mayhew, it looks like a refrigerator and some other wood items out on the lawn. We did receive a complaint about this, we inspected the property again this morning, it's still in the same condition, so we request that you declare this property a nuisance so we can follow our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Stirts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 to 91, resolution declaring nuisance for accumulated debris at 384 Glen Oaks Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Long?
Again, we have a property here at 384 Glen Oaks with furniture and mattresses that have been left in the yard, we did receive a complaint about this, the property remained in the same condition yet this morning, so we do request that you declare it a nuisance so we can follow our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Stirts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 to 92, resolution declaring nuisance for accumulated debris at 1032 Beach Meadow Lane, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Long?
Yeah, this is an occupied structure and a repeat offender at 1032 Beach Meadow, as you can see, there's, again, debris in the yard, including furniture, the property was in the same condition this morning, so we request that you declare it a nuisance so we can follow our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Stirts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?